Good evening, everyone. We're happy to see all of you here. Let us bow our heads and a word of prayer. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for our citizens who are here tonight. And we ask you to continue to bless this city and bless us as we go forward. In your name we pray, amen. I would like to acknowledge Ms. Latoya Johnson with Family Consumer Science from South Carolina State University. Would you raise your hand? And she has her class here tonight, so we're gonna ask the students to stand. Let's give them a hand. Thank you so much. And of course, we're happy to see everybody. Everybody's important to us. Item number one, we have consideration of June 23rd, 2025 DPU Budget Workshop Minutes. Motion is made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Item number two, consideration of August 15th, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes.
Move for passage.
Motion is made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Item number three, consideration of August 19th, 2025 City Council Minutes.
Move for the adoption of the City Council Minutes.
Motion been made by Councilman Kit, second by Dr. Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you. We have recognition of September Community of Character Traits. The trait is determination. And determination means having and made a firm decision and being resolved not to change it. And we're gonna ask everybody if you would adopt that trait for the month of September. We would appreciate it. At this time, we're gonna have Mr. Our Parks and Recreation Director come forth, Mr. Sean Taylor. And he's gonna give recognitions from the Park of Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Administrator Everin. We're here today to celebrate and also recognize our championship teams this year. It's a tradition we've been doing here. So they'll receive a tournament championship banner that will hang at the North Road. Through our partnership with Williams &amp; Williams, we have what we call the Field of Dreams. And so those youngsters will be able to see their name on display throughout their time. So at this time, I want to bring in our district champions from our Rookie League. This is our youngest age group that we have some champions. So Rookie League, if they would come. And they competed in a tournament, and they won their tournament out of 2014. Congratulations. Thank you. Anybody else? These are Rookie League All-Stars selected out of eight teams, and they competed again in a tournament. And they won the tournament and represented us in the state. And we're very fortunate to have them. This is the future of our league. And so we're very happy to have champions at the Rookie League aged six years and younger. Now, we would like to acknowledge our 10 U-Boys All-Star District Champions. And again, our 10 U-Boys participated in a tournament. This year, we're very fortunate to have a group of champions in all our age divisions. And so we're very excited to acknowledge and let them receive their tournament banner that will hang at North Road on the Field of Dreams. Congratulations, guys. Now, we would acknowledge and recognize our 12 U-Boys All-Stars District Championships. And again, this team is fortunate to win. By one arrow, they would have ended up as playing in the state. They played in our state tournament, and by one era, a bulk called, they would have been the state champions and playing in our World Series. So we're very happy about their performance. And in lieu of that, D Y B, we have a prestigious award outside of our championships that we call our Sportsmanship Award. It's the King Dixon Award for our state. And it is voted on by coaches, umpires, and D Y B officials. And our 12 U-Boys in Greenwood this year were selected to be the Sportsmanship Champion in the tournament. So I wanted to present them their award. They know it, but didn't know it. So they're also gonna receive a championship and their Sportsmanship Award tonight. So congratulations, guys. Orangeburg represents District 6 in South Carolina. Our district runs all the way from North Augusta to Orangeburg. And so when we play in tournaments, we play against teams from all the way from North Augusta all the way back here to win our district and to represent us in the state. And we're very fortunate to have a bunch of dedicated volunteers. Our coaches are all volunteers that have given countless hours every night preparing those youngsters to compete and to win. And so again, congratulations and thank you all.
Let's give them a big hand. We're so proud of our young people. We wanna give Mr. Taylor a big shout-out over there. Thank you and your staff for what y'all have done to make it a beautiful place. We are so fortunate.
Mayor, but before you go into further, at this time, I would like to say to everyone, go out to the complex, sports complex at the North Road. You holler about there's nothing to do. There is so much to do in Orangeburg.
Yes.
If you take advantage of all that we have. You see those young men and just little ladies play the same way. So we want you to go out. I go out every day when they're here. And see, that's why I stay in shape. But you gotta get up and do things. So let's support our young people. There is so much to do. Thank you again, Mr. Sean Taylor, and all the groups that working with these young people. Thanks again. Let's give them another round of applause.
We are so fortunate to have our Superintendent, Dr. Sean Foster. He's the Superintendent of Orangeburg County Schools. He gonna come before. Before he come out, we have our School Board Chairman and all of those that work at district level and for the school district. Would y'all stand, please? We are so fortunate to have all of y'all today.
Well, thank you, Mayor Butler, Members of the Council, Administrator Everin. So when I called to ask to come to give an update, you told me I had an hour, so I tried to cut it down. But I'm gonna try to be as quickly as I can, guys, to get through this presentation. So we're doing something that we've put in our strategic plan. And that is to make sure we're updating our community. I say often that the key to communication is to tell people what you're gonna do, give them an update, and then you tell them when it's done. So we're here to kind of give an update as to what's going on in our school district. But there are a lot of innovative ideas. But we want to make sure our community knows so they can continue to champion, again, not just these great young men who we saw before us today, but there are a lot of great things going on throughout Orangeburg County. So here's what Orangeburg County looks like, folks. Since consolidation, we have about 10,000 students. We now operate 28 schools. That's down from 32 schools. If you're familiar, we had the consolidation project where we're now closing some of our older schools and building newer, more innovative facilities. We travel about 1.8 million miles a year. We had this year's graduating class had $41 million in college scholarships. So just to give you a context, last year was 19 million. So this group of individuals doubled the contributions in scholarships. But not only that, and what's not shown here, and I'll speak about it briefly. We had our first cohort of students in the Orangeburg Advanced College who graduate with their associate's degree. Some graduated with two associate's degrees and a high school diploma. Again, we have 86% poverty rate. We had a 79% graduation rate. And I have some preliminary numbers, but I can't tell you what it is. But this year is gonna be much better than that, so we can still see the continued progress here in Orangeburg. So our mission in Orangeburg is simple. It's to help students discover and develop their person, their purpose, and their platform. We want our students to know who they are. We want to have them identify their purpose, but also give them a platform so they can show their ingenious. And we do that by hopefully building capacity and sustaining success in our students. But that platform that I spoke about, we call it four As. It's the academics, the arts, the activities, and athletics. Those are our four As. So I'm gonna speak real briefly about our academics. So here's some innovative things that are going on academically in our schools. We have five STEM labs and also music labs in our school district. We just opened up one here at Clark. We'll be opening up our piano labs. We just opened up one at Marshall. So we have now our feeder pattern where our elementary schools, middle schools, and Orangeburg Wilkson now have the arts magnet program. And we'll continue that as we move into our new facility, and you'll hear about that shortly. We have three broadcasting studios in our school district. Tomorrow at 6 o'clock, they'll be actually doing a documentary on the next two we're opening up at Carver Edisto and Edisto High School. So if you have time at 6 o'clock, go over to Claflin's Theater. They'll be doing a documentary on how these studios will help students build career paths for the future. And we have STEM labs. We also have three esports labs. And happy to let you know that our first esports team at Lake Marion won the national championship last year in their first season. So a lot of talented students here. But here's some things I want to show you just as a kind of overview of the innovation that's going on in our schools. So we've added drone technology in our aviation programs here, as well as enhanced our robotics programs throughout our middle schools and our high schools in the district. We hope to continue to expand that to a number of schools. And this is at our vocational center. But at Clark Middle School is where we have our aviation and our robotics drone program, where we'll start at the middle school level. Here you see our esports lab. And again, that's at all three of our technology centers, and this was their first competition. But more notably, the airplane simulators, we have those in all areas of the district where our students can get hours towards the actual pilot's license. We had our first students to receive their FAA 107AA Drone Certification last year as a 10th grader. So a lot of great things that are going on. But our culinary arts students, Family Consumer Science students, we wanted to expand what we offer to our students here in the form of our culinary arts. So this is our first food truck. Last week, it was at the Back to School Bash, but our culinary arts students also learned food truck enterprise. And they'll be operating this food truck throughout the county. Again, a real-life experience where those students can take that skill and take it somewhere, and then hopefully have a job that they would be able to earn some money to support their family. Going as fast as I can. Also, we talked about our gifted and talented programs. We have nine magnet programs. Actually, we'll be 10. And you see those here. These programs are geared towards enhancing students' interests and their own individual genius. But I spoke about the Orangeburg Advanced College. That's a, not necessarily a magnet program, but it's really an advanced program. These students, again, start taking college courses in the ninth grade and graduate with one or two associate's degrees. Had an opportunity to speak to some of these students, and many of these students have entered college. Actually, not many of them. All of them have entered college as a junior. Two of them went to USC. One young lady transferred in 90 credits. The minimum that was transferred to any college was at Clark Atlanta, which was my daughter, and that was 65. So everyone else had between 65 and 90 credit hours going in to their college years. So we talk about activities. We had three students who won the National Skills Competition in middle school. This is the first time we've won a national award. This is the largest career and technology competition in the world. So we had three young men from Clark Middle School to win that competition. We had one, two students win the National Beta Club Competition, and one student is the two-time National Beta Club Speech Oriatory Champion for the second time in a row. Also, Claflin University gave many of our students in the oratory competition $20,000. They're fourth and fifth graders because of their performance. The arts. We had a district arts choir. We had $800,000 in new instruments. Four students participated in the South Carolina Honors Choir. And we had our fifth consecutive district-wide summer arts academy. Athletics, 100% of our programs last year received athletic, new athletic uniforms. Also, we have athletic trainers through a partnership with MUSC, where all of our schools have athletic trainers now. And five of our schools advanced to the regional or state championship, and we had our district-wide track competition. Going as fast as I can. Here's what everybody wants to know about, the facilities. We have three open, brand-new three facilities. We had $40 million that were gifted to us through the State Department of Education. We've replaced 2,005 HVAC units in our district. So Mr. Harley, hopefully, we can get our bill down with that. New track and athletic fields, we installed six of those. But I want to show you this as well. Sidney told me I had 10 minutes, so I'm trying to get this done correctly. Hey, Lake Marion, we opened up Lake Marion last year. It was going into its second year. William J. Clark Middle School, we combined Howard and moved those students from Howard into William J. Clark. And this process is going extremely well. We tried to get a little bit of the traffic off of Malfunction Junction by making a stacking loop, and that's going fairly well now that students are getting into their routines. Also, we had East Lake High School. So this is gonna be particularly interesting to this area. This is the new school that we just built down in the eastern part of the county. But the great thing about this facility is this exact facility you'll see at the corner of Chestnut and Belleville Road in August of 2020, next August, 2027. Yes, 26. December 26 is when they're supposed to complete that facility. But also, this is what that facility would look like. We're gonna kind of match the colors of South Carolina State, but also recognize the history of the Wilkinson High School. I'm gonna skip these next ones. But here's what the site is looking like now, just real briefly, 10 seconds of what you'll see if you drive by Chestnut and Belleville here shortly. They're now tearing that building down. It should be completely down within the next two weeks. They'll be putting in footings, and you'll begin to see some walls going up hopefully in the next month, month and a half. Orangeburg Wilkson, if you drive down Cook Road, you can see something that you probably, I see heads shaking. It's a reality now. I think people can see that. But that facility is a 350,000-square facility. We're hoping to move in there in August. But significant progress being made in this facility. Hopefully, we'll be doing a ceremony to recognize the last bean being laid here shortly. So again, progress. They're putting the roof on. We're getting some windows put in. So we're moving along in this project extremely well. I'll fast-forward. Finance. We had $160 million budget that we just passed. We have built our fund balance to $43.2 million from $7 million over the last four years. No tax increase, and we've had three years consecutive of clean audits in the school district. So great financial stewardship. Recruitment and retention. Again, I want to take an opportunity to thank the city, Mayor Butler, Administrator, and the council members, because a lot of this stuff isn't done in isolation. It's done in partnership. They're behind the scenes, but our staff appreciation days and those types of things that they help support us with allows our teachers to see, to feel appreciated, and they stay. Consequently, when I got here, I had 127 teacher vacancies. We have two today. Two teacher vacancies. Again, it takes a community to ensure that people want to come here, and more importantly, that they want to stay here. And finally, we received a number of awards. Our Communications Department has received 23 awards, that's state and national. We've had 1.4 thousand video media appearances, and that was old. People often reach out, media outlets, to say, what's going on? Can you tell us? Can you show us? Can you present to us? And we're happy to do that because there are a lot of great things. And anytime we have an opportunity to showcase what Orangeburg has to offer, we need to take that opportunity to do it. And with that being said, I want to say thank you. If you want to scan that QR code, you can keep up with all of our social media, any information. But finally, in closing, again, I mentioned this earlier. Sincere thank you to the councils, Mayor Butler, to the council members. I see Chief Austin here. Well, he was here. There he is. You know, they work with us. We sit in that office, and they tolerate me. So thank you, because they make sure we have SROs. I see Pastor Ganey. What happens here and what has happened and the blessing that we've been able to have in our school district, again, doesn't belong to Dr. Foster. It belongs to partnerships. It belongs to people behind the scenes. Warren Harley and I talk often. Called just last week about a hiccup at OW. It's back on track. So those are the types of partnerships that people don't see that's providing opportunities for our children. So again, thank you for those partnerships. And Sidney, you told me 10 minutes, so I didn't do well. Thank you. I haven't answered any questions, guys.
Let's give Dr. Foster a hand. We appreciate you, Dr. Foster, for what you do for our students, because I know with you, students are first. They are the first in the order of business. Dr. Foster was my last boss before I retired, so he's a good man. We thank you so much.
He is a good man. I want to thank him too. You did an excellent job.
We're gonna have Ms. Brenda Jamison to come, but before she come, I just want to say something about her. She, we had a vision to open the Samaritan House. It was closed for so many years. And we raised the money to get it open, and I called her because she was in retirement. And I called her. I said, Brenda, I need you to come and be the chairman over the Samaritan House Board of Trustees. And she didn't change words. She came, and she has done a phenomenal job. She's a hard worker, and I appreciate her. And she was my very first boss when I got out of school to start working, and she has been a big help. And I just, we just appreciate you, Brenda, that you come at this time. Let's give her a hand clap.
Thank you so much, Mayor Butler, Members of City Council, Administrators and Staff. It's a pleasure. It really is a pleasure to speak before you tonight and have an agenda to represent the Samaritan House. And I must take just a moment out of my five minutes to ask the staff of the Samaritan House to please stand. Just the staff right now. Just the staff to stand. Do you see what staff we have? You can count them on one hand. I want to ask also our dedicated board members who are here to please stand. And we have some former board members. Please stand. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We want to ask our volunteers to please stand. Ask our volunteers to please stand. I don't think I've missed anybody. I don't think we have any residents here, right? Oh, we have some residents here tonight? We want our residents to please stand. If we have some residents here? Thank you all so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. This month, September marks the fifth year that Samaritan House has been back in operation. The board in 2009, under the direction of Mayor Butler, answered the call to raise funds to refurbish and reopen the Samaritan House, and we did that in 2020. Since that time, the board and staff have kept the vision and the mission alive of providing a safe place for the unsheltered population and providing resources to assist them in securing more stable housing and to improve their own lives. It has been challenging. It's been the most challenging thing I've ever done. My 35 years in social services was not this challenging. It has been physically and mentally challenging, but it has also been rewarding. One of the most rewarding things I've ever gotten involved with. We have accomplished much, but we must have help moving forward. Our overarching need is in the establishment of a collaborative partnership. And I was glad to hear Dr. Foster say how you have partnered with them for them to be as successful as they are. And we're hoping, I prepared a handout for you. I can't speak as fast as Dr. Foster. Mr. Everin didn't give me 10 minutes, but I'm sure precedence has been set. Our overarching need is for a collaborative partnership. And that's the document that I have presented to you on behalf of the Samaritan's Board, its leadership, our staff, our volunteers, and our residents. Mr. Miller could not be here tonight. He's out trying to raise funds as we speak. I think he's in Beaumont or in Co. But that collaborative partnership, we've outlined as being with city government, county government, the Samaritan House, service agencies, community, and the unsheltered population to achieve community growth. That's the only way that we are going to achieve community growth to solve the issues of the unsheltered population in Orangeburg County is through a collaborative partnership. We have organized the Coalition for the Homeless. But on that board, on that committee, we have no funders. We have no persons who can talk to us about money, who can discuss housing plans, transportation needs, plans to move forward with the homeless issues. It is imperative. As the demand for our services continues to grow, sustaining and expanded our support requires stable funding. For the past five years, the Samaritan House has relied primarily on fundraising efforts and limited grant opportunities. However, moving forward, we cannot continue to operate on fundraising alone and as it provides only uncertain projections. Given the current economic climate that affects all of us, it is imperative that councils, city and county councils, allocate a dedicated line item in your budget to ensure the continued operation of the Samaritan House. To, again, to ensure the continued operation of the Samaritan House. Our organization operates on a lean annual budget of just over $400,000. And this investment is essential to maintaining critical services for those in need. And this investment is essential to maintaining critical services for those in need. Let's not continue to kick the can down the road. Let's work together in partnership to accomplish what needs to be done. We can boast by saying we can account for every dollar that the community has given us. As Dr. Foster also says, we audited every year and we have received a clean audit for each year that we have been in operation. On the second page of the document I provided, I've just listed the critical areas of financial need that we currently have. These are the same kind of needs that you and I both have in our homes. We have needs for our residents for transitional and permanent housing support. When they get ready to move out, and that is the whole idea, not for them to stay at the shelter, but to have permanent housing. They need first months rent and security deposits. They need utility deposits. Can you believe that utility deposits can range between three hundred and seven hundred dollars per person? It's been a long time since I've paid a utility deposit. And as Tammy was telling me that, that really shocked me for people who have no income or very limited income. We have transportational support needs. We need a new vehicle. The vehicle that you see us driving around now, and most folks can tell you, when we moved in there, it was on the blocks in the back of the Samaritan House. We kind of fixed it up, spruced it up. Somebody gave us an old truck. We kind of spruced that up as well. We need reliable vehicle to transport our residents in. The current challenges of high fuel costs and frequent repairs are killing us. Additional funds are needed to expand transportation. We need to hire someone to carry our residents to work at night, to carry our residents to work on the weekends. We tried to get a taxi company to do that. Can you imagine? They wanted us to pay twenty-five dollars each way to take our residents to Huskavanna. And they wanted that money to be paid in cash. We don't operate that way. We don't operate on a cash basis that way. Food assistance. We need help with food assistance. We provide them with three nutritious meals per day for fifty-five residents, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Food costs, as you know, are going up. The grant funding for our two shelter cooks have not been renewed. Just also the basic needs that residents needs we've outlined for you. Most of them don't have medicine, but they have medical needs. When they go to work, they need work shoes, they need clothing. They also have to pay for a birth certificate or an ID card. Those things cost. And so that's what they need is verification. Our administrative costs. Our staff wages for resident assistants. I want our resident assistants to stand up. These are the people who work at night. One at night by herself. By herself. She's standing there with fifty-five people by herself at night. One may work during the day, one may work at night. But that's it. And they are working below the county average. Our executive director and our case manager salaries are below the market rate. Case manager, Tammy. Damn. She's working below. If we ask her to do any more, she's gonna flip upside down. All right. Then our facility operations. We pay approximately twenty-five hundred dollars a month for our utilities. That's how much our utility bill is. And now you see here our insurance coverages that we also have. But one other need that we have is number seven, and that's dear to me. Because we need a dedicated facility for families. We accept men, women, and their children, and their children. I just don't believe a shelter is the place for little children. They range from all ages. So if we can find a smaller facility to place families in, that would definitely be ideal. The next point that's very near and dear to us is, and this has to be done through a collaborative partnership, is in terms of sitting down around the table, developing a plan for the unsheltered population in Orangeburg County, addressing the needs of not low-income housing, affordable housing, and there is a difference. There is a major difference. Okay. My time. On the next page, I just listed our accomplishments. The accomplishments we had from January one of twenty-four through August twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five. I'll let you read this. Because we are so appreciative to all the employers who have hired them. We are appreciative of the residents' successes. But I want to call your attention to where it says agency achievements. In this, I want you to look at the number of five hundred and forty-nine. Five hundred and forty-nine residents were sheltered in our facility in the past twenty-one months. That means five hundred and forty-nine people, men, women, and children. Two hundred and sixty men, two hundred and thirty women, and fifty-nine children were placed in the shelter just in that twenty-one months. Just in that twenty-one months there. These are not people now that were dropped off. I've heard that term used. These are not people that were dropped off in Orangeburg. These are people all over Orangeburg County. These are people that you see in plain sight. When I was driving yesterday down North Road, if I'd had a van, I could have picked up ten. Because that's how prevalent it is. The unsheltered population is growing. Their resident, their average age is fifty-five, limited or no income, limited employability skills. Many experience emotional challenges and substance abuse. The, there's been a sixty percent increase in residents at the shelter in two thousand twenty-four compared to two thousand twenty-three. My last bullet here is about community support. We could not do what we do if we didn't have the support of the community. We had five hundred donors. These are individual people, five hundred donors. And we've had some who've been given ten, fifteen, twenty dollars every month ever since we've been open. So we had five hundred donors who contributed support financially. Sixty-three businesses, thirty faith-based organizations, and two hundred and twenty individuals provided in-kind donations. Fifty-seven new volunteers joined our mission of service. Those ladies you saw standing up? Fifty-seven of them joined during that period of time because we could not have done it without them. So on the last page that you have, our vision is everyone should have access to a safe place to live. We believe that. We honestly believe it. Our mission is to offer people experience in homelessness, shelter, and resources to secure housing because they are not there to stay. From whence we began, Mayor Butler, in two thousand nineteen, there was ten of us. Only three of us from that original ten are still there. Me, Jair French, and Karen Hay. Since then, we have enlarged our board to nineteen because we knew we had to have a working board. Not a board that just comes to hear the minutes and receives information, but a working board who handles a lot of the responsibilities that we don't have hired staff to do. So we, I appreciate them. But I do appreciate, and we do appreciate, all that you all have done to help us to open. Because that first hundred and seventy thousand dollars came from the city. The money that you all gave to help us to get new beds so we could enlarge the number of residents that we have. But I'm seriously standing before you and before the Orangeburg community to say to you that we can no longer do it alone. We cannot. You know, we're the first source that you call if someone is unsheltered and they need a place to stay. We receive calls from Charleston, Columbia, all around. If we have a bed, we take them. Because we also place, we also place residents in Aiken, Columbia, wherever they're willing to go if we find a bed there for them. So help us. Let's work together. Let's form that collaborative partnership. Let's sit down around the table and let's talk about what we can do. The unsheltered population is not going away. It is not going away. Thank you so very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Jamison. Ms. Jamison, we would like to thank you for giving us that presentation. And certainly, it's not gonna go unnoticed. And we're gonna, this board is gonna take it on advisement and see what we can do. We thank you so much. And I just want to just commend you and the Board of Trustees for the work you have done because that was a long, hard task to get it back open. Thank you so much. Those who are standing and it's hard on your legs, please move over to some of these seats. We got one over here, Ms. Bowman. And that's, are we on the front? Because some people are leaving. Take the seats, please. Let's give them time now. So you won't have to stand. Okay.
There's still one or two over here on the front seat. Okay.
Go ahead, Ms.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, guests. I want to take a moment to thank Dr. Foster and Chair Wilson Brunson and the staff at Orangeburg County School District for all the great work that they do. Also, I want to thank Ms. Jamison and Samaritan House for everything that they do. As they said, partnerships and collaboration is very important. We know that in order for the city to grow, we need good schools. And I think Dr. Foster and his staff have done a tremendous job in improving our schools and making that a non-issue as we go forward. So item four for your consideration is third reading of an ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year October one, two thousand twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This is the annual budget amendment that we do. We are asking that the budget be amended to reflect the increase from twenty-nine point six million to thirty-two point six million. As a reminder, some of the drivers of this increase is obviously the cost of living, inflation. Insurance costs have risen. We had to pay an additional one million dollars in insurance for insurance costs and also just salaries and additional inflationary pressures. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions regarding the budget before I read the ordinance? Any comments? An ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-four, beginning September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mayor and Council, I move for the adoption of the ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have the motion to carry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number five for your considerations and ordinance approving the budget for the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. There are a couple amendments or one amendment I would want you all to consider. That is, we've gone back and had some conversations with Mr. Harley, DPU, also our budget analyst. And we would like to propose a cost of living increase of two percent for our employees. That would add about two hundred thousand dollars to the budget. We will receive that money from DPU, from their allocation of nine point one to nine point three million. And at the appropriate time, I would ask for an amendment to include that so that we could provide a cost of living adjustment for our employees. Also, as a reminder, that would not include myself or Mr. Harley or Judge Johnson. That would be at you all's discretion as to whether or not to provide that. But this would include all the other employees, all their city and subsequent DPU employees. But again, at the appropriate time, I would ask for an amendment to that. Also want to just kind of talk about the budget. So we're asking for twenty-nine million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and seven instead of twenty-nine million, seven hundred and nineteen, three hundred and seven dollars. But some of the challenges, as I've stated in the past, is our city growth. We're talking about annexation, obviously, and we have a plan for that. Inflation, staffing, recruiting, and retention. Emergency preparedness is something that we definitely want to keep in at the front of our budget needs. This budget does not include a tax increase for this year. Would maintain the city mileage at one hundred and nine bills. The general fund revenue is projected to increase one point two million dollars from twenty-four point seven to twenty-five point nine. And expenditures, again, is twenty-five point nine million dollars. We would also add one million dollars to our reserve funds. We are recommending continuing a hiring freeze. We're also recommending eliminating ten full-time positions that are currently funded but not filled at this moment. We do not recommend occurring any additional debt. And we also have included some financial policies to provide a better structurally balanced budget. I know Ms. Grievous had some questions about our our fees, fines and fees. I think we included that in your packet in terms of a comparison. Would you like for me to go through those?
Just, yeah, for the
For the public, yes. Okay. So we overall are suggesting that our permit fees, when you add all the permit fees together, would be a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-two dollars. For comparison purposes, Orangeburg County is a hundred and seventy dollars. Calhoun County is two hundred and forty-five dollars. Moncks Corner is a hundred and sixty dollars. Buford is a hundred and ninety-four dollars. And Antigua Kay is two hundred and forty dollars. Plan review, we are increasing or adding that cost, which would be eighty-six dollars. The county charges seventeen dollars for that. Calhoun County, twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Moncks Corner, eighty dollars. Antigua Kay, sixty dollars. And Buford, ninety-seven dollars. Some other fines and fee increases that we have recommended is handicap parking. We're recommending a uniform traffic citation of five hundred dollars. That's what the city of Columbia charges. Buford charges four hundred dollars. And the city of Aiken charges between one hundred and two hundred dollars. Fire lane increase from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars. The city of Columbia currently charges five hundred dollars for that. City of Greenville, we do not have a charge. And Buford charges fifty dollars for that. See some other comparisons here. Blocking sidewalk, $50. City of Columbia, we're recommending an increase from $20 to $50. City of Columbia charges $50. City of Greenville, $25. So those are just a few comparisons as it relates to DPS fines and fees. For parks and rec fines and fees, we are recommending an increase for residents per sport from $30 to $35. Orangeburg County charges $20. Calhoun County charges $20. Aiken charges $65. And Somerville charges $50. And for non-residents, we are recommending $60, an increase of $5. So, some varies based on age. And the other cities, there is no difference between what they charge residents, in city residents versus non-city residents.
So, with the parks and rec increase, do you anticipate a decrease in participation? Seeing as how they can participate in county sports for $15?
I don't anticipate a decrease. I mean, Orangeburg, the city, I should say, is by far the largest parks and rec department. And again, the increases are relatively minimal. We're talking about $5 just to increase to keep up with cost of living and inflation. But other than that, nothing has really changed from the previous two presentations outside of the cost of living, 2% that we're recommending. And that would take an amendment from you all to amend the budget to allow for that.
Any questions?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Mr. Sidney, I only heard two names with the 2% increase, but not go to two. Could we get a list of all the persons who will not be eligible for the 2%?
Yes, it would be me, Mr. Harley and Judge Johnson.
Only three people?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that a one-time increase or, I guess, a one-time payment? Or is that a salary increase?
That's a salary increase.
So that's something that would have to be sustained over time?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
But city employees didn't get a raise since past year, did they?
No, but all city employees got a bonus.
But the year before, they got 1% of it?
I think it was 2%. 3%, 2%, 2%.
And then before that, we got 3.
Yes. I know Ms. Annette just asked a question in terms of cost of living, being a permanent status on the salary. I will indulge the council that we need to revisit this portion in terms of cost of living plus merits in the next, before the next budget of 2026, 2027. So when we finish, we need to put that into action in order to revisit that area.
Thank you. Sidney, do you have anything else?
No, sir, other than, again, we need an amendment to have that 2% cost of living adjustment.
Someone need to make a motion to amend this.
The budget.
I make a motion to pass the new budget for the city of Orangeburg. With the exception of the judge, the city manager and DPU managers relays the cost of living since the council says their salaries. And also with the amendment of the 2% from what it was before.
Most have been made by Dr. Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The next item for your consideration is amending Chapter 5 Police Regulations of the City Code by adding Section 5-31 Hate, Intimidation and Providing for Other Related Matters. As you may recall, Richland County was the first local government in the state of South Carolina to pass a hate crimes ordinance. I think South Carolina is one of only two states in the nation that does not have hate crime legislation. Orangeburg County subsequently passed an ordinance at their last council meeting, well, before. I don't know if they meet today or not. And we have before you now an ordinance amendment that would make hate, that would add language to recognize hate crimes here in the city of Orangeburg. Basically, it would be unlawful for any person to cause fear of harm, injury or damage to a victim or property because of the victim's actual perceived race, ethnicity, national origin, color, religion, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity. And it would provide for up to $500 fine. It'll be a misdemeanor or 30 days in prison or both, be at the discretion of the judge. Any questions?
Are there any questions on item, on the hate crime? If not, I'm gonna read the ordinance. Ordinance number 2025, Amending Chapter 5 Police Regulations of the City Code by Adding Section 531 Hate, Intimidation and Providing for Other Matters, Other Related Matters.
Move for approval.
Most have been made by Councilman Grievous.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Okay, for item number seven, I'm gonna yield to Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Taylor, to provide information on that.
Again, good evening again, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
Through Minister to Everin. In your packet, you have before you the recommendation from the Economization Tax Committee. We met on August 27th. We had four requestees requesting funds from the city's accommodation. And we have Orangeburg County Fair, Orangeburg Fine Arts, City of Orangeburg Parks, the SAFE program, whether for inquiries for your consideration. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions concerning the accommodation tax decision? If not, we would like to receive a motion.
Mayor and Council, I move adoption for the approval of the accommodation tax advisory committee recommendation.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you. Manage pertaining to Department of Public Utilities, Mr. Harley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and our public. You have before you the third reading of an ordinance to amend our current year's budget. As you all recall, we always do an amendment to the current budget to more accurately reflect how things came together at the end of the year. I also, because it's generally not a whole lot that changes, in this particular budget, we ended up adjusting a number of our, several of our numbers. So I sent you a memo on last week with the packet dated August 28th, 2025, referencing the amendments that we are going to request that you make. And I'll just highlight, beginning with the current year's budget, fiscal year 2425 budget. I'll start from the bottom. The net effect on all the changes is a projected net income, an increase in the projected net income of $2.4 million after the transfer, so it's a positive. We, or to the good, 2.4 million after all of the changes that we've made in the budget. Just to highlight a few, some of those include the Economic Development Fund expense that we committed to support the county and economic development project that we've all talked about. Also, there's, that's the biggest of the changes. With some other changes, contributed capital increased approximately 5.3 million. That stuff that we get, again, that's a benefit to us. And just wanted to point all of those out. Other than that, those are the major changes, again, that drive the positive net income on our current year's budget. Having said that, I'll take any questions, but at the appropriate time, I'd ask that you adopt this current budget, add this amendment to the current budget and then adopt it as amended.
We'd like to receive a motion. If not, any questions?
For clarity, on page two, the fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Yes.
Cash flow revisions.
Oh, yes. Cash flow revisions, skip that, sorry about that. Total operating cash flow decreased by 1 million. And non-capital financing cash flow decreased by 200,000. Financing capital-related cash flows decreased by 6.7. And investing cash flows increased by 1.39, 1.393. So, those are the changes. Again, for the record, none of this impacts our, the rate. We're still asking you to approve the same rate as we go into the next year. So that'll be covered on the next budget though, that, just want to point that out.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Harley. You mentioned a few things and we are listening and it's already written and we read about it. Will this stabilize us or this getting, just getting by?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Will this bring about stability or this be just getting by?
So, so these amendments, Mr. Hannah, do not impact our ability to continue to operate at the level that we've been. They won't impact any of these. It's really a cleanup of numbers for us. As we get closer to the end of the year, we see more clearly, again, what the numbers are shaking out to be. And just always trying to hold those to the last, at last reading, if there are any. So these numbers won't impact our ability to operate. Again, the net impact on these for the fiscal year currently is $2.4 million increase to the good. So we end up with more money than we projected, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you.
Any, you have any more?
No.
Anybody? You can leave?
No.
Okay. Well, we need to make a motion.
Yeah, man, man?
Yeah, for the number eights.
For number?
So, a motion to amend the budget as presented by the DPU manager would suffice.
Motion has been made.
Did you make it?
You go ahead.
I make a motion to accept the amendment of the current budget that ends in September 30th, 2025.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the third reading of our next year's budget, budget covering October 20th, October 1, 2025 to September 30th, 2026. Just to start, we have made no changes to the rate plan. It is as it has been for the last two readings. And so there are no changes in that regard. The budget does include, as Mr. Evering mentioned, a 2% COLA that would exclude, be excluding the manager of the DPU and only covering the DPU employees as, again, stated by Mr. Evering. We do, however, include in with that, as we have done for the last nine years now, a merit program. And we only budget partial of that, so that only is covering a half of the year. So that's a 2%, but it would be, instead of 300, it'd be $150,000. And we, we've always done it that way to make sure that we can manage the costs as we go through the year. Having said that, I do want to go through the other amendments that we've made to the numbers. Again, this is reflected in your packet and the spreadsheet as you received on last Friday. For the current year, oh, I'm sorry, for the next year's budget, 2526, the net effect of all the changes, again, is a increase after transfer of $640,000, again, to the good. So the net effect is that it goes positive, not negative. But some of those changes or amendments is that we, we are adjusting increase in interest income to $1 million. Total projected cost of sales increased 1.5 million due to the upward revision of our purchase power, electric and gas. And then the operating income increased, of course, 1.5 million. Again, that's related to our purchase power cost. And that does, that's just, again, numbers being more clearly reflected at the end of the year. It does not impact our ability to operate or do business. Again, it'll be a net impact, 640,000 to the positive side. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
No, just to set the record straight. I spare my recommendation to the city in terms of the budgeting on this concept of cost of living and merit increase. This also, we need to revisit these two items in the next, after the budget in order to establish, you know, real, specific areas of increase. Whether we need to combine cost of living and merit at the same time or just establish one normal way of giving money to the, and to our workers.
Yes, thank you.
And the merit of this will be done in budget meeting before we come back?
You mean what, Dr. Kalu? Yes, so I think Dr. Kalu is recommending that after we get through this budget, we bring back to council a plan that would give us one thing to do. As you all know, I have advocated over the years to just do one pot of merit money. That way we can manage it and reward employees for their good work based on performance. And so I have no issue with that. I think that is an excellent idea going forward.
Excellent.
But that's, 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 you know, something that I think, council, we can bring back to council
Right.
going into next, next budget.
Okay. So you said there's gonna be a decrease in the projected cash flow for this upcoming fiscal year, correct?
Current, current year?
For 2024?
Oh, 2024, I actually didn't go over that for you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Cash flow, total operating cash flow decreased by 3.2 million. Non-capital financing cash flow did not change. Financing and capital-related cash flow decreased by sixteen point two million. Investing cash flows did not change. The net effect, again, is a decrease in projected cash flow of twenty million. It's basically on how we're going to use the cash. We projected that we are not going to use, although we have projects on the board that might be X amount, we try to make sure we project out how much we actually are going to spend. And so we've revised those numbers down, if that makes sense. In other words, if we, I'll just use some random numbers. If we, if we have projects on the board that are twenty five million dollars, well, we know that we're, we're not going to spend that entire amount this year. We've essentially revised those number down, those numbers down. So we won't tie up that money unnecessarily, if that makes sense.
It does.
And so it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we won't have money. We just, for the budget's purposes, we revise that number back down so that we can be more reflective of what we think we're actually going to spend.
So does that affect the rates, the proposed rate increase at all?
No, because the projects will get done. And, 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 and so it just means that, at, the, the, the way we do our projects, if I explain to you guys again, we have to order long lead items. We may not pay for those things right then, but we have to order them. And when we order them, I have to know I do have the money to pay for.
Right.
And so when Wade orders a transformer, it may take fifty two months to get here. I mean, sorry, fifty two weeks to get here, or eighteen months to get here. At the end of the day, before he orders it, I have to know I have the money to pay for. And so I know it won't come in, in this budget year, but it's going to come in, and, and I have to be able to pay for it when it does get here, if that makes sense.
It does.
Yeah.
So, again, I'm just going to ask for clarification, and rate increases absolutely needed for this fiscal year.
Yes.
Any more questions? If not, I would like to read this ordinance. An ordinance to adopt a budget for the operation of the Department of Public Utilities of the City of Orangeburg, State of South Carolina, for the fiscal year October one, two thousand twenty five, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. Adopt and amend electric rates effective October one, two thousand twenty five. Adopt, amend natural gas rates effective October one, two thousand twenty five. Adopt and amend water rates effective October one, two thousand twenty five. Adopt amended water, wastewater rates effective October one, two thousand twenty five.
Mr. Mayor, I want to point out, I, I think it's appropriate that you first amend the budget and then adopt it as amended, if that makes sense to everybody. So all of the changes that are included.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I move the adoption of to amend the budget.
As stated by the DPU manager will be sufficient.
For the third read.
What, what's the word?
As stated by the DPU manager, all the, all the.
By the DPU.
As stated by DPU manager.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second by me.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Now, let's go and let's adopt the budget.
Okay. Mayor and Council, I move for the adoption of the budget for the operation of the Department of Public Utilities for year, fiscal year October first, twenty twenty five, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Adopt amended electric rates effective October first, twenty twenty five. Adopted amended nat, uh, natural gas rates effective October first, twenty twenty five. Adopt amended wa, water rates effective October first, twenty twenty five. And adopt amended wastewater rates effective October first, twenty twenty five.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Kit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Harley.
Yes.
Okay, we have item.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on item number ten, you have a resolution, a request for permission that you authorize us to accept a loan assistance money from the South Carolina Water Quality Revolving Fund. And then it would authorize the mayor to execute this loan on behalf of the DPU. Tell you a little bit about this. This is a principal forgiveness, forgiveness loan. So the loan won't accrue any interest. It'll be for half a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, and we won't have to pay it back if we do everything that the grant or the, the program requires us to do, and we will. And so that, that would benefit us as we complete a PER to evaluate our water quality going forward, in short, so.
Wonderful.
I ask your permission to.
Are there any questions for Mr. Harley before I read the resolution? If not, a resolution authorizing and approving the acceptance of certain loans assistance monies from the South Carolina Water Quality Revolving Fund Authority. Authorize the mayor to execute that certain loan assistance agreement between the City of Orangeburg and the South Carolina Water Quality Revolving Fund Authority and other matters related there, too.
I make a motion to accept the loan agreement for DPU.
A motion has been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Warren, I just want to say this, we are so fortunate to be one of the top people to have good quality water in, 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 all around, throughout the state, that the water, drinking water. Our waters is, and the, and the public need to know that.
Well, I, I, I want to say this, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong. In Blind Taste Test, I hate to sound like a Coke commercial, in Blind Taste Test, we have graded out as the best water in the state. So I, I just.
Yes, we got to toot our horn.
Hey, we gotta blow our horn, and if a frog gun croaking his own horn, he can't cook. That's right. One, one last item before I go, Mr. Mayor, number, item number eleven. Just a quick announcement, we'll bring this back to you once we get all the loan document, uh, the, I'm sorry, the grant documents for acceptance. But I wanted to announce, because it's already been made public, I shot you guys an email. So this is really for the public's knowledge. But the DPU Electric Division was awarded a grid resiliency grant from the federal government, and we apply through Santee Cooper, and I put, included in the, the packet, the list of other recipients. But the DPU was awarded six hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars to do grid improvements, poles, upgrades, sensors, and things on our poles to improve our system and be more resilient. And so I just wanted to let you know that we're continuing to work to, to make things better. I do want to take this time, before I sit down, if you allow me, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank our staff for their hard work on the budget. I want to commend them, we, you know, sometimes we push a little hard, but I know they, they are dedicated to doing what's right for the City of Orangeburg and all of its citizens, all the customers that live outside of the city. We do our best, and our main goal is to have a safe and affordable and reliable power. And those three things we keep at forever present as we talk about how to make our system better. So I want to thank the staff for all of their hard, hard work, and thank, working with Sydney as well.
Yeah. Warren, before you sit down, I want the public to know, because some people know, Wade, come out here, Wade. Wade is the director over the electric, electric division.
That's correct.
Y'all look, y'all, so y'all can see, he's the director. He's a, he's an engineer, and we have Dave, is that David?
No, that, that, that's Eric Odom, he's the engineer over the water division.
Come, come out here, Eric, Eric is over the waste, is that wastewater?
Oh, no, drinking water.
Drain water.
Drinking water.
Drinking water, drinking water. Y'all turn around so they can see, because some public don't know who, these, these men are engineers, they have degrees.
And the rest of the budget team is not here, but Daniel, uh, Driggers.
Come in, come in, Daniel, he's a, come on, Daniel Driggers. Daniel is an part of, he's, he's a NAMAs man. Where's Cheryl? Cheryl, come on, Cheryl, Cheryl is over the human resources for, uh, DPU. Y'all, that's it, we got a good, we got any more of your employees in here?
Uh, I think that's it. That's probably why they didn't want to come tonight.
They work hard, they hardworking people.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we want to thank Mr. Harley for all his hard work, because he's the director, and he really tries to work with us. Sometime we have a battle, but he stay calm and lead us on through the storm. So we want to give Mr. Harley a hand clap. Mr. Harley's from Bowman, he's a Bowman guy. So we appreciate, we want to, we want to thank Sydney Evering for his hard work, leading the city and his team. And, well, your team here, Sydney, stand up, come, come, come up, Sydney, stand up. It's Sydney, our city administrator, Chief Austin, stand up, Chief Austin, our chief of police, Terry, Teresa, we, she's the, she's the vice city administrator. We have Sean Taylor, what's Sean there? He is, he is the director of parks, y'all come up so they can see, they don't know y'all. Y'all come up so they can see you. I can't keep y'all in the dark. And I want y'all to give Clay a big hand back there, stand up, Clay. Clay, keep us, keep the internet right. He ran, y'all give him a good hand, and what's the other guy? Daniel, stand up, Daniel's the new on the block. Give Daniel a hand. And we want to thank goodness for Linda McDaniel. She takes care, stand up, Linda, so they can see you. She take care of the mayor and the city administrator and everything else. So we want to appreciate y'all, thank y'all so much, am I forgetting anybody?
Yeah. We have two ministers this night that we should recognize, two ministers.
We got two good ministers here tonight. We got Reverend Reverend Hayes T. Gady, good shepherd. Reverend right here, Elder from the UPC Church, he's a good guy, appreciate you. So we got, we got it all covered here. And we got all these good people here, we want to appreciate y'all, thank you. Because I just want everybody to know, we don't do this by ourselves. We make, we make the rule, but they are the hands and feet that carry it out. So I just want y'all to know that, and we appreciate you all so much, uh, working with us through these times.
And they help us keep us straight.
Yes, they do. We're going to, we're going in executive session, but before we go in, I'd like to read what we're going to do. Discussion and negotiation of incidents to propose contractual arrangements and receipt of legal advice, South Carolina Code, section thirty dash four dash thirty dash A two. Rose Street Park, Livingston House lease, Orangeburg Municipal Airport hangars, audit bid, Duke's Energy of South Carolina. And number thirteen is discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of any employee, a student, or a person related to public body, or appointment of a person to a public body of South Carolina Code thirty dash four, seven, seventy A one Municipal Court. And, and we, 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 we going to make a motion, I think we're going to be returning out to open session to authorize DPU manager to sign an importation of agreement with Duke's Energy of Carolina. So we need to make a motion to return, we will return, we'll make a motion when we come back into it. So we need to make a motion to go into executive session.
Mayor and Council, I move that we make a motion to go into executive session. The following has been announced, and return to open session if necessary.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit, second by Councilman Floma, all in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion is carried. Now, you can, you can, you can wait on us, I don't know how long it's going to take us to get back. But if you're going home, thank you for coming, and have a good night.
We would like to entertain a motion to go back into open session.
Make the motion and come back in open session.
Motion been made by Councilman Strowman, second by Councilman Kidall, in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? As Harris, the motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening again. Just to brief you on item number 14, we're asking that you authorize the DPU manager to sign an implementation agreement with Duke Energy Carolinas LLC. As we have discussed before, Duke Energy owns Duke Energy Carolinas and Duke Energy Progress. Those are two operating companies in South Carolina. They are looking to merge those two operations into one operating unit. And we are, we have been in negotiating with them. And this implementation agreement, we are asking that you let us sign because it shows that we are in agreement with what they are proposing to do. And mainly because it does not put the DPU and the citizens of Orangeburg at a disadvantage. And we wanted to make sure that it was a beneficial move for us and we are comfortable to say that it is.
And are there any discussions with Mr. Harley about this, about item number 14? If not, we would like to entertain a motion.
Mayor, councilor, I move that we authorize the DPU manager to sign an implementation agreement with Duke Energy Carolina LLC.
A motion has been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? As Harris, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
We would like to entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Strowman, second by Councilman Hannah, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? As Harris, the motion is carried. Good night.